So welcome everyone to the City Council, City of North Plains City Council Regular Session Meeting for Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven o'clock. Please stand for the planning. Thank you. Mayor Lenihan here, Councilor Kendall.
Here.
Councilor Martinez.
Here.
Councilor Payton.
Present.
Councilor President Sheldon.
Present.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
And Councilor Page is excused this evening. Great. Thank you very much, Lori. Before we, before I add for the consent agenda. So this is the last meeting of the year and we have some refreshments and we want folks to feel comfortable to pop over there and have some cake. We have some apple cider as well. So if you or children are getting restless and they need something, feel free. Don't, don't worry that you're interrupting. Please get up and help yourself. And I know Patty Burns is over here and she can help too. So yeah, we want everyone to, to help themselves. All right. So we have a consent agenda, which is resolution that has resolution two-two-nine-oh appointing Doug Nunacamp to the Planning Commission for a four-year term. We also have the approval of tonight's agenda and we also have the approval of the December second City Council minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes that we need to be aware of? Hearing none. We do have Doug Nunacamp online and, and he is available if anyone needs to ask him any questions or anything like that. Does anyone feel the need to ask Mr. Nunacamp a question or two for his appointment? Okay, then I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll move with approval on consent agenda.
Back in. All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. A public comment. I have, if anyone wishes to speak on a subject not on the agenda, please see Lori and fill out a yellow card. In the meantime, is there anyone online that wishes to speak about something not on the agenda? And Lori, have we received anything via email? Nothing prior to the meeting tonight, thank you. Okay? Anyone with a hand raised? No one online? And then I'm assuming two folks here that have filled out cards. You want to speak on the agenda items? And Mr. Weber, do you want to speak on the, on the agenda item? You filled out a co-comment card? Not now. I mean, I'm just saying, you want to, you want to talk on the, on this agenda item that you wrote down on the card. Thank you. Hey. All right, tonight is our staff night. So this is a great night to hear what is going on in our city. And first up is Robin, our library director.
Good evening, Mayor Lenihan and City Councilors. I am not going to go over my whole report, but I just want to reiterate that that council's support of the library has meant a lot to the entire community, especially when it comes to reporting early literacy through the pandemic and up till now and cultural awareness and lifelong learning as well as community outreach. And so we, we, the library wanted to extend our appreciation to all of you. And then just on a happy note, we are trending to have the highest number of checkouts we've ever had at our library for this calendar year. So I'll be sure to update you on that. So any questions?
Councilor Smith?
This is my last night too. It's been great working with you. I think you've done a great job. Remember your first day in the library? You've done a great job. I think we all appreciate the efforts you put in.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Sure. Well, I'll just state that I appreciate the strategic plan. I hope you stay focused on the strategic plan and the goals incorporated into that. And I know that there could be some financial headwinds from WCCLS and the county to what they're going to be able to actually provide, and I'm hoping for the best outcome there. And I know you're staying abreast of that. So, you know, keep the focus. That's, that's, that's my advice. And, and thanks for everything you've done to make our library much more available to our community and increase the, really the participation. That's very committed.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it and thank you for the advice.
I certainly appreciate you really building community and, and building community in a way that has reached, you know, children and grandparents alike. And I want you to know that if you ever need a, you know, a reader at your library, please feel free to reach out to me because I just think that our, when I talk about our library in the grander scheme of things and, and the grander region, I always call our little library that does and could, right? And we just are so impressed with everything that you've done there. So thank you again so much, Robin.
Well, I have to give credit to the wonderful staff and the community. All of our volunteers and it's not all about me. So, but thank you very much.
I wish that I had the four times volunteer actually, maybe that will happen. We don't know. When I walk in there, it's always, the atmosphere is just alive, you know, and it's just, and the people that you got working for you are just wonderful. Thank you for what you did for this community.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you so much.
All right. Chief Jones, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. As you can see from my prepared staff report, November was kind of a busy one for North Plains Police. And the only really thing to add outside of my writing report to you is just I want to take them all to just express our sincere appreciation for outgoing mayor and outgoing city councilors on behalf of North Plains Police Department, those that have served here presently and in the past. You guys have demonstrated just this unwavering commitment in support for us and public safety within the city. So I just want to say thank you and very much appreciate the work you've done. So with that, I'm open for questions.
We have, I appreciate you and the community support that you've done, have demonstrated in our community and it's been wonderful to get to know you. Thank you.
Yeah, the community policing aspect is, it's fantastic. It's something that needs to continue here. And, and we know we, we've got to find some money at some point or our voters need to approve some money for truly twenty-four-seven coverage, but until that time, I think you're doing the best you can with the resources you have. So the impact's there and I think the community feels that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. And once again, we'd like to express our appreciation for, for serving this community. I do not have anything else to add to the report that I had submitted to you all.
There's one thing on the overflow of the water with the beavers.
Yes.
Now back in, we've got here, there was, back in two-twenty, there was a Walton Basin Beaver Strategy.
Yes.
Have you been working with them?
That would require a lot more coordination with them and probably some costs to be able to implement some other mitigation techniques and strategies. And that's something that we can talk about in the, in the future with, with the, the next council that's coming in. But as far as the flooding that was occurring on Gordon recently, the crews have been out pretty consistently within the last month or so breaking up the dams and two of my crew members finished up breaking up the dam earlier today. And kind of the, the floodwaters received a little bit from, from Gordon as well. So it's, it's going to be a constant tug of war with the beavers and getting them trapped because I believe there's about four or five of them out there right now.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a comment. I appreciate the, the cadence with which you've been putting more documents into public view about things that matter. And sometimes some of those documents seem to be hidden and having them out front makes it easier to do business with the city. So I appreciate that. I, I do want to remind you that I'm a bit of a stickler for facilities and making sure that we stay on top of our facilities and have a plan because those are assets that that are, we're going to have for a long, long time. So, and I appreciate a lot of the work that you've done on that front. I know you folks in Public Works are kind of drinking from a fire hose, but I mean, it, it shows day in and day out what's, what's happening here. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Dustin, I'm going to Public Works in your position. One was Gary Gaudry, he was here for twenty years. And then Mike Boyton was here for twenty, right at twenty or twenty-one. So you've got maybe what eighteen years ago. So it's good. I mean, I think we've set the stuff up for you and with that new facility, why I think it's going to be really great. Do a good job for North Plains. Thank you for what you, I know your health.
Certainly appreciate you, Dustin. I know that it's not easy with, you know, so much to do out there and so many trash cans to empty and so much. And, and I know what kind of workload that you have and, but I appreciate everything that you do for us and your team as well. So we could not have the city that we have without you and your team. So thank you.
Definitely could not do it without my team.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Goodness.
All right. All right, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. I think what I'll do is I'll just update you real quick on the first item. And then if you have questions on anything else on the list there or building permit related, I can help you with that. And then we do have Brian Feeney on, on the Zoom call for helping you with any engineering questions. As far as the green light development goes, we did have a hearing last week with the planning commission, the continued hearing. And during that hearing, the planning commission did approve the project. They added some conditions of approval to address a few of their concerns. And so we are going to be mailing out that decision tomorrow morning. We just had to do a little fine tuning of the document between Friday and this morning. And so it's ready to go out now. Chair King has signed it. We have received some phone calls though, and at this time we are anticipating that the decision will probably be appealed. And that's, that's the end of that after that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on any of those other items.
Questions? The, we know you just talked about, did they put that road through? Did they, that road that they wanted to put through, the citizens that were concerned about?
Yeah. So one of, one of the changes that came from the first meeting to the second meeting was the planning commission wanted to see if they could relocate their access. So we go to Main Street and they were able to do that.
Oh, they were.
And then what they did is at the northeast corner of the property where there is a, an existing alleyway out to Terrell, they put four removable ballers in there and that will be used for emergency access in case of a fire or something like that. And so those ballers could be removed and they could go out and have two accesses out into the surrounding transportation network if there was an emergency. So the planning commission appreciated that. That was one of their main requests that they had. Some of the other ones had to do with the amount of park space that was in the project to make sure that the additional eleven doors that were coming with the green light project still met that criteria. And it did, they had substantially more than was required. And then another one had to do with the width of the intersection there at Terrell and Main Street. It, it necks down quite a bit there to lessen the distance for pedestrians across that street and it does meet our standard. But I will tell you, it's, it is very tight. I took the little EV car that we have up there to look at it and it was, it was tight for that little car. So I can only imagine if you have an SUV or something like that. It would be pretty tight to, to get through. But it was built to our standards. So unfortunately, we have a, a small, small street standard there.
Any questions, Councilor Smith?
Yeah, I was ex-official with last month on Parks Board. Did that dissolve the skate park going to a basketball court?
Oh, you're talking about the phase five part in Red Hill? We did receive the type two design review application for that park and it includes a full-size footsoff court and a half-court basketball court.
Okay.
That's, that's what they submitted. And that is my understanding. That's what the Parks Board acknowledged and recommended. So it seems that it's in line with that recommendation.
It's going to be approved in January?
Yeah, it'll probably be approved in January. They just submitted it about two and a half weeks ago. So with the green light project and a few other things, we're still kind of in that completeness review phase with that application. We have the first thirty days to review the application to make sure everything that they're supposed to submit is in. So we're kind of still on that page right now with that application.
I always have a sore spot on one of my items and one of those is on three J list in the packet and that's relates to North Avenue on the east end. And they, have they given us any dates or anything about what, when they're going to get that done? I mean, they, you know, they claimed they had right away issues. It looks like those are resolved. So do they have a date when they're going to get the same finished?
I think, Councilor Sheldon, that would be better for Brian Feeney. He's working on that. You're talking about the east end of North Avenue there. Yeah, he is working on that. I'm, I'm not really directly tied to working with the consultants on that project. You know, once, once it gets approved at the planning end, it kind of moves to the engineering team for them to work on all those issues. So I think Brian will be able to help you with that.
That's fine. I didn't figure Dustin would have an answer, but it just seems to me like they've been dragging their feet.
It, it does. And I know everybody's a little frustrated with that. And, and I know that we have started to press them a little bit to try and get that resolved. So Brian, I think we'll be able to help you with that question.
I think he's on, he's online right now.
I am. Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Lenihan and fellow councilors. Council Sheldon, to answer your question, yeah, we, we acknowledge, you know, it's not, it's not Lennar's delay on this one. It was actually the franchise utility Lumen who had to relocate some utilities. They have since located existing utilities and things are in the works. I would anticipate that work starting this week is what we've heard from them. And then Lennar is going to finish up their stuff on the east end of North Avenue. So once Lumen's out of the way, we can get a better update from Lennar on finishing that section of the road. And then on the west end over by the elementary school, they've submitted their third round of red line permit or plans for our review just last Friday. So hopefully we can get that done in the next two weeks and get them under construction very shortly as well to finish out the entire section of North Avenue.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And Steve, thank you so much for your reporting and really providing more detail in, in the reporting for this last year. I certainly have appreciated that. I know it's not been easy being new in, in this, not in this role, but in this community. And, but you, but you've done it well. And I appreciate, I appreciate you providing the detail in your reports. It's been helpful.
Okay, I appreciate that. We have, in my short time here, I had to address some very challenging subjects. So I appreciate all you guys working with me and being patient as we get through some of these difficult subjects. It can be very complicated at times and a little confusing with all the rules and regulations and, and how they all apply. And so I think our legal counsel as well to help me get through some of that. But yeah, it's been great working with you all the last two years and and I, I look forward to seeing you folks come in now and on this side of the table, right? And working back with us further.
All right. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question about the, your report. The last one, under development review, the commercial street partition, you received a land use approval on November twenty-fifth. Can you just remind me, what is, what was that for?
It's along the north side of Commercial Street, you know, over where the old Rusty Piston used to be, that vacant lots.
That lot, okay.
Correct. I mean, they had like four or five parcels. Steve might be able to address it as well. But legal lots and one of them was a lot larger and they actually asked for a petition on that one that went through the land use process. So they can make their five to ten homes. I can't remember the total number of them. Steve would better know. But it was part of their Commercial Street homes that have been under review for a while.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Brian. Any other questions or comments for Brian? All right. Thank you. Finance Department, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Department report. I don't have anything else new to report besides what's in the the monthly staff or monthly department report there. So I'll, I'm happy to take any questions. And then we do of course have later in the agenda, some items related to finances and we'll be talking about that a bit. So I would basically just stand for questions and thank you.
Councilor Sheldon?
Yeah, the main question I have is where are we at with shut offs and delinquencies? We haven't been updated of that for a while.
Right. Thank you, Council Sheldon. No, I mean, we haven't had any abnormal activity. We, as you recall, we reported on that monthly and then we got down to very low delinquencies and overdue accounts past sixty days got way down to a handful, basically. And we haven't seen any. No, yeah, exactly. We, we had a handful of seventy-two hour shut off notices and Bailey workless, I think just about all of them. So just this past week. So it's, we've, we've been doing pretty well on that front. Okay, great. Thanks.
And comments or questions for Bill? Yep. Okay. All right, moving along. We're down to our ordinances. So we're looking at ordinance number four ninety-seven is amending chapter thirty-eight for the council rules. This is actually the second reading and then adoption. Any additional comments from you, Bill, before we? Before I ask for a motion?
I don't believe so. Nothing to add since you've discussed it a few times.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for second reading, please.
I'll move to second reading ordinance four nine seven and ordinance of the City of North Plains, the City Council of the City of North Plains amending City of North Plains City Council ordinance.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Ordinance number four ninety-seven is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of North Plains, Oregon, amending the City of North Plains City Council rules. Now I will entertaining a motion for adoption.
I move for adoption, ordinance number four ninety-seven.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Ordinance number four ninety-eight is amending chapter thirty-two of the North Plains Municipal Code Regarding City Manager Duties. Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance four nine eight proposed before you is basically what we had discussed on December second at a work session. We've added the agenda packet for that meeting and you all got to kind of walk through it. And we had mentioned kind of a preview to the issue before that, I believe in the month of November, well, actually October and November. So the bottom line is that ordinance four nine eight would basically remove from city code very skilled and what have become dated powers and duties of the city manager position that were adopted in nineteen ninety-nine, back when the city's population was not what it is today. And at that time, the city manager actually was personally responsible for a number of different duties him or herself, including being the city planner, among other things. And so all of that, all of those specific duties particular to the city manager job at that time were, were put in the code in nineteen ninety-nine. Things have changed. The current city manager position oversees a lot of staff and operations that are, we have staff now that are trained and with experience to deal with those things instead of the city manager doing it. And city manager then manages those individuals or those kind of coordination on those departments. So this ordinance would remove all of that specific language from the code forced to the city manager's job responsibilities and simply cite that the job description and duties in the charter are the effective job description and, and obligations of the job. So it doesn't add powers. It just refers to the charter as the authority on what the city manager's job description is.
And they were in the code. So if they were to stay in the code, then we would actually have to go through the whole process of changing the code and updating the code. So you were, we were really looking at two places where this, this job responsibilities were located. So by just adopting, hopefully adopting this ordinance forty-nine is just giving more efficiency to what the process is like.
Correct. There were a lot of redundancy, not, not just dated job descriptions, but redundancies as well. And so it, it, it just lent itself to a complicated process of city council working with the city manager and making sure that what needs to be done is done, done adequately and there's a standard for it.
Counselor, any questions or comments for Bill?
The only thing I can think of is we, we hired a city manager, I think it was in ninety-seven, ninety-eight. And we put that stuff together. I don't do any of that. So I didn't take some of my stuff away. Get it while you can.
All right. If there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for, oh, ordinance number four ninety-eight for the, for the first reading?
Um. No, adoption.
Adoption. I move for adoption, ordinance number four ninety-eight.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? The only discussion point I have is just to make sure to put on your to-do list for next year, the surety bond. That needs to be addressed. So just make sure that that's on your to-do list with the next, with the incoming council. Okay.
Point of order, I believe we have to have a first reading of this. If I'm not mistaken. We haven't had a first reading. Four nine eight.
Has to be a first reading and if it's unanimous, then you can do the second reading and then you can do an adoption as we mentioned.
So I'll read.
Well, but if we have, Chris.
Yeah, it's in the charter. Normally you have to have a first reading when you're convinced that's unanimous, you can move to adopt.
Ordinance, yes. So the city charter in section eighteen just says that an ordinance may take effect as soon as adopted or other date less than thirty days after adoption if it contains an emergency clause. But does not include any specific requirements for how to approve an ordinance. Is there one in the ordinance already? Emergency clause?
No.
In the ordinance itself?
No.
No. On this one?
No, not on this one.
Normally it would have to be first reading unanimous and then it could go to adoption.
That's right. Because you have to amend it. You have the emergency clause.
Correct.
So we have a, we have a motion on the table. Should we then remove that and then start again?
Yeah, if the, made the motion, could withdraw.
Again, ordinance number four ninety-eight, I would make the motion to, made it for his first reading by Todd.
Steve wants to hold your first.
Yeah, I did withdraw the first. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion on the table for first reading by Todd only.
Second.
All right. And we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Ordinance number four ninety-eight is an ordinance amending chapter thirty-two of the North Plains Municipal Code Regarding City Manager Duties. So now we can apply a motion to adopt.
I move to adopt ordinance four nine eight to amend the municipal code to revise the powers and responsibilities of the city manager.
All second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification, Councilor Sheldon. All right. All right, now resolution ten A, resolution two-two-eight-seven, the canvassing results from the November fourth, twenty-twenty-four general election. Are there any comments or questions for that resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution number two-two-eight-seven, a resolution of the city of North Plains. The city council of the city of North Plains, Oregon, canvassing results of the general election held in city of North Plains on November fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. All right, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. All right, ten B is resolution two-two-eight-eight, appointing three members to the North Plains Budget Committee. We took this up at our last meeting and we appointed David Hatcher, Larry Gonzalez, and Tom Murdock for a four-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt in the resolution number two-two-eight-eight, resolution of the city council, the city of North Plains, Oregon, appointing David Hatcher, Larry Gonzalez, and Tom Murdock to be members to the North Plains Budget Committee for a four-year term.
All right, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Next up is resolution two-two-eight-nine. This is the agreement transferring rights, title, and interest of the North Plains Garlic Festival to the North Plains Events Association. Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty-two eighty-nine is the result of the conversation that we had at a work session you all on December second, where we were joined by a different attorney from the city attorney's office with more specialization and intellectual property. The topic at hand here is resolution two-two-eight-nine would would authorize me to enter into an agreement with the North Plains Event Association in order to convey or give to the North Plains Event Association two pieces of intellectual property, registered website domain names related to the the North Plains Elephant Garlic Festival. Back in twenty-fourteen, the city received intellectual property at the time from the from the North Plains Chamber of Commerce, as it was the owner of those things. Intellectual property for the Elephant Garlic Festival was given to the city for safekeeping until a future date. And that future date has has come with resolution twenty-two eighty-nine if you approve it. This would grant those two domain names, website domain names, ownership of them, as well as the guarantee that the city will not lay claim to any other intellectual property it may have previously held in safekeeping. And the North Plains Event Association, which which operates the Elephant Garlic Festival by contract with the city as a nonprofit would get the the domain names, the intellectual property, kind of as part of its future operations of the of the Elephant Garlic Festival. So that's all it does. The the city doesn't make any money off of the websites themselves. The city doesn't sell things to make money, royalties, that sort of thing off of images or any of that. So it isn't anything that the city has ever really claimed the economic value from earning income from. The city does contract with the North Plains Association, the event association, to operate the Elephant Garlic Festival. There's a flat fee given to the city as part of that agreement after operation of the of the festival. But the intellectual property itself doesn't, is, has never really been an income generator and a value generator as an asset for the city. So the city wouldn't be handing anything over that kind of has an income generation or that type of value name to it at all. Just to answer that question.
All right. Counselors, we have someone that wants to, from the public, that wants to speak on that. Do you want to have a conversation first or ask questions of staff? Or would you like to? Okay, Don Weber, could you please come up and just state your name and the city of your residence, state with a record, please? This is your correct address?
Don Weber, North Plains, Oregon, is my residence. My concern, I mean, I love the Garlic Festival. It just didn't make sense to me when I heard the city was going to give away intellectual property. There's no logic to that for me. So I did some research and attended the work session. My understanding is there was tension problems back in two thousand fourteen. At that point, I guess kind of it is an effort to stabilize the Garlic Festival. Everything was transferred to the city. I found an old article and the fault, a year or so after that, they said they had one of the best garlic festivals ever. It had worked really well to put that in the hands of the city and then the special events is over here running it. So my understanding now is we have the city that owns the Garlic Festival, then we have the North Plains Special Events that runs it. Seems to be a great partnership. So I'm confused why we're fixing something that doesn't seem to be broken, to be honest. It was mentioned at the work session that the chamber, I guess it was said at some level, there's legal documents showing that the chamber transferred it to the city with the understanding at some point it could go, could go back to the chamber. Bill, you had stated there, well, so this is kind of what we're doing, giving it back. That confuses me too, because we're not giving it back to the chamber. We're giving it back to a third party. And to me, the legal documents would get in the way of that, because the legal documents say it's either the city's or it goes back to the chamber. Now, if the chamber wants to take it back and the legal documents say it can, they want to give it to somebody else, so be it. But the whole discussion to me is very confusing, and I really have heard nothing said of why this is in the best interest of the city. I think we're in this wonderful situation now. We're working really well with special events. My concern down the way, if there was any tensions, special events can simply take the Garlic Festival and go somewhere else. We've, but so why is it in our interest to give it away? I've heard nothing to support that. So that's my concern. We've got a good thing going. Let's keep it going.
Right, thank you. Senator Chris, do you want to address any of the legal questions?
Just, I guess, echo Bill's comments that the the efficacy for the city is to consolidate operations with the website that operates the festival. This isn't really the, it's not really a value-bearing asset for the city. And so there's an admin, just administrative efficiency to be achieved in it's all again consolidating the website name with the people who are operating the Garlic Festival. I'm not sure there's more to it than that. And we did have, beginning, we thought there were like eight or ten trademarks and business names and all of these things. It turns out all of those expired years ago, and there's really only two active website names that are still being used. And so again, consolidating those with the operator makes sense.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to think about resolution number two-two-eight-nine, freedom transferring rights, title and interest of the North Plains Garlic Festival to the North Plains Event Association.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Resolution two-two-nine-one, adopting a twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five biennial supplemental budget to appropriate funds for items unknown at the time of the budget was adopted. Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. The topic of this resolution was discussed in a work session weeks ago. When this resolution basically if passed would amend the budget, would be a supplemental budget for the Vehicle and Equipment Reserve Fund of the city, which is basically the savings account to save up for and pay for depreciable assets, vehicles and furniture and those sorts of things. This would, this would add forty thousand dollars of additional spending to the biennial budget for that fund to enable the city to purchase all furniture, equipment needed for the new Public Works Public Services building on West Union Road. The city hasn't opened a new building, but had built and opened a new building in quite a while. So it's been saving up for a number of years for furniture and that sort of thing. And the time has come, and the supplemental budget would basically just allow that to happen. Furniture for the building was not part of the budget for the new bill. The new building has its own fund where we account for monies in from the state. SDCs and things that the city pays in to pay for the building. Furniture wasn't, furniture need wasn't known when the biennial budget was was adopted, because the building was in early design and we didn't even know we would have a second floor to it. And therefore additional space to need furniture for it. So here we are, we know what the building is now, and we know what the furniture, what the need is now. So this supplemental budget would allow us to buy the furniture.
Any comments or questions for Bill? I know we've had a conversation about this and expected this item to be on our agenda.
Oh, there's, you're going to have furniture.
Got to have furniture. All right. If there are none, and I will entertain a motion for adoption of resolution two-two-nine-one.
Hope for adoption, resolution two-two-nine-one.
A second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. All right. I'm going to interject here for just a moment and enter into bringing resolution two-two-nine-four to the table. It is a walk-on resolution. And as for Public Works Building dedication, we are very proud and excited to be able to have this new building and it's going to be home for our public works and other staff members in the future, which is exciting. And we thought, I thought, you know, we we have to have a name for the building and didn't think that having just Public Works Building was, you know, such an attractive, it's not very sexy and all that sort of thing. So I kind of worked with with Bill a little bit on this and decided that we needed to give it a fit full name and also dedicated to a man who has given so much of his time in this community and even kind of started out being a public works kind of a hands-on kind of a person forty-four years ago. So I know that this is going to come as a shock to him. And I can't look at him right now. But I am putting on the floor, resolution number two-two-nine-four is a resolution naming and dedicating the Public Works Building as the Robert Butch Kendall Public Service Building. So if if you will allow me, I do have something I would like to read for the record. And then I think we may take a short recess and have some cake real quick. But resolution number two-two-nine-four is a resolution naming and dedicating the building, Robert Butch Kendall Public Service Building. Whereas Robert Butch Kendall began serving on the North Plains City Council in nineteen eighty and dedicated the next forty-four years to serving on the council. And whereas during that time, Robert Butch Kendall twice served as mayor of the city. And whereas Robert Butch Kendall spent thirty years as a volunteer firefighter. And whereas Robert Butch Kendall spent thirty years serving on the County Community Development Block Rad Four. And nineteen years on the Fire District Two. And whereas Robert Butch Kendall has made significant contributions to the community in his capacity on various boards and in service as a volunteer. And whereas, based on Robert Butch Kendall's outstanding contributions and unwavering commitment to the city of North Plains, now therefore the North Plains City Council resolves as follows. The council directs that the building located at two-nine-nine-oh-five Northwest West Union Road, North Plains be designated and hereafter known as the Robert Butch Kendall Public Service Building. The council shall take such administrative steps as necessary to implement the designation. And the resolution is effective immediately upon adoption and approved by the North Plains City Council on this day, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'd like to say nineteen eighty, we'd been living here about seven years in town. We moved in seventy-three. And then when I joined in nineteen eighty, my wife was very formidable to me doing this, and she was never an outgoing person. She stayed home and I knew where she was at when I got home. And it was for, because of her that I could do this. It's not just me, it was her together. You know, that was, she, I wish she was there tonight. So she got forty years with me, you know, doing that. From nineteen eighty to nineteen two thousand and twenty. So thank you, Barbara. All my whole family's here. I've got, it's just one, we got all my brothers and sisters here. I just, my grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and friends of everything. And the one thing I made here is so many friends. I just can't tell you, living here for fifty-one years, it is just wonderful. I mean, everybody just it's just a great community, and I want to thank those people that voted for me and this whole group here that supported us in the election, you know. I thank everyone of you for that. Glad you all.
You're an icon, Butch. You're an icon.
And we are having a dedication on Wednesday, December the eighteenth, ribbon cutting beginning at five-thirty. And then at six o'clock, we'll also have recognition of volunteers, myself and others. And the the public is invited, and we would really love for you to come. You'll be able to walk through the building and get a tour of the building as well. And and if I may, I'd like to go ahead and just take a ten-minute recess just so that we can maybe take a break and and get a piece of cake and then we'll resume in ten. Thank you. All right, everyone, we're back from recess. Thank you so much. And in all the excitement, we're just going to go through the the formalities of making the motion to approve resolution two-two-nine-four. So Lori can record it. There was, we were just a little bit too excited. And you couldn't quite get it. So I I move that we approve resolution number two-two-nine-four, which is a resolution naming and dedicating the Public Works Building as the Robert Butch Kendall Public Service Building. A second. And we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Do we have to have an abstention? Okay, moving on. We have, we're down to resolution number two-two-nine-two, the supplemental budget for the general fund. I'm going to turn this over to you, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Second, the second supplemental budget for the night, as you said, this is specifically for the general fund and affecting two different departments if approved. Over the course of a number of months, during our department reports, I have come to you and mentioned a few different items that look more and more likely would need to be supplemental budget amendment. supplemental budget amendments to the biennial budget. And that's where we are with, with this resolution. There are three items in it that necessitate, if you approve it, necessitate a supplemental budget that would amount to a three percent increase in expenditure for the general fund overall. Oregon budget law supplemental budgets, really, it's a, you look at the, the fund and potentially increasing spending for the fund. And so if we're doing things separately, this would be for the general fund. Three items. Number one, this would add twenty-five thousand dollars to pay for a lot of work we have had to do, not just in audit prep for two years, but also overhauling redoing the actual financial statements that we submit to the auditor. We've been doing things the same way for a very long time. There have been changes to reporting standards. The previous financial consultant we had, we never looked into it and asked her to redo everything. But for best practices, we're, we're adding and expanding some things that we report that the auditors then actually review. So that's what the first part of this is about, is additional funding for all of that work that we've had to do. Number two is sixty-five thousand dollars in unbudgeted IT and cybersecurity expenditure. When we, when, when the twenty-three, twenty-five biennial budget was adopted, the city's IT and cybersecurity was done by somebody moonlighting after hours. And we budgeted a grand total of seven, little over seven thousand dollars for that over the course of two years. But getting into the need for, the needs of the city, best practices for IT and cybersecurity for a city, as well as the Public Works Building become an emergency, becoming an emergency operations center. We needed to move into having proper professional IT and cybersecurity for the city. And that's ended up being, being an expenditure that by the end of January would be a total of sixty-five thousand dollars unbudgeted. And so that's what the supplemental, that, that portion of the supplemental budget is for that. The third thing is actually the first item I began saying we would need to do a supplemental for, and we're finally here. And that is ninety-eight thousand dollars in funds to pay for speed radar, speed radar signs throughout the city as a cost-efficient way to get people to slow down and be safer as they drive, driving along, you're going a little too fast on, on commercial or on Pacific. You get your speed or slow down flash that you, and it's a highly effective tool. Back in the spring, actually in the, right before the spring of twenty twenty-three, as we were considering this budget, city council went through and decided what their priorities would be for funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, from the federal government, as a result of COVID, kind of the COVID recovery money we got from the federal government. And city council decided on and authorized those purchases, basically. We, you all decided you wanted those kind of signs put around town and the cost to be about a hundred thousand dollars. That, that number failed to get into the budget in the formal budget document. It's my error. I didn't get the line item in. And, and we have purchased those things, but it was just a because you had discussed that that was a priority for your, for ARPA spending. So we went ahead and did it. But lo and behold, I forgot to actually put the line item in the budget. This puts that in there now. So this isn't anything new or unexpected per se. But it does get it in there so that we properly reflected in a supplemental budget. So those three items contribute to the change in the general fund if you adopt the supplemental budget. And for anything else, I would just stand for questions.
All right, if there are no additional questions, I know we've talked about a few of these things, then I will entertain a motion for resolution two two nine two.
I'll move to approve resolution number two two nine two.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. All right. Item number ten F is resolution two two nine three, authorizing contingency spending. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution, so some background. The city of North Plains, like other cities in Oregon, standard Oregon budget law, cities in North Plains does this, has budgeted contingency expenditures authorized, pre-authorized expenditure under the title contingency. And these have to be for operating budgets, such as the general fund, streets fund, water fund, and well, and now, you know, now the Justin May's fund. But the bottom line is that in the twenty-three, twenty-five biennial budget for the general fund, the city of North Plains, city council adopted the budget to have a two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollar contingency line item for the general fund. Now, I have Oregon administrative rule one five oh F two nine four dash point three five two eight. And basically what, if you go and look at that, basically what it does is describes how it works. And the bottom line is that the two hundred thousand dollars in the budget that council adopted, that's pre-authorized expenditure as an expenditure that's considered done. It's just a matter of, if the time comes for something unexpected, emergency, what have you, that couldn't have been anticipated. North, the North Plains City Council can adopt a resolution that authorizes that already approved expenditure to be put into specific places. It's kind of held as pre-spent and it gets assigned to specific things. This resolution, if approved, would assign some of that, one hundred thousand dollars of that, two hundred thousand dollars to specific things that were not anticipated in, when adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five biennial budget. And the staff report kind of goes into those, but that one hundred thousand dollars would be half of the contingency, leaving half for the last six months of the biennium. Fifteen thousand dollars for realized legal expenses related to the UGB referendum and response since the May election and the UGB referendum. Forty thousand dollars for referendum decision appeal budget. Housing needs analysis appeal, defense budget for five thousand dollars. And then the U, the relook process itself, and this is probably, I mean, everything is key here, but I just want to point this out. Since May, in response to the vote and voters asking North Plains to stop and relook and rethink and be smart about its growth, the city has initiated a relook process with the, run by the, the planning firm Three J. And the full scope of that process that started in October and we're looking to be done by January, maybe early February, depending, is going to cost the city about forty thousand dollars, just in additional planning. We didn't expect to have to do that. So all combined, all of those things are one hundred thousand dollars. And the contingency line item makes the most sense because it's pre-authorized spending. It doesn't add to the total amount of expenditure that the general fund is doing. It's, it's already been, been authorized. So that's what this resolution is about. It just authorizes us to make the accounting assignments for the contingent, for one hundred thousand dollars of the contingency funds for general fund. And with that, I stand for questions.
We have someone that wants to speak on this topic. Do you want to hear that person before you ask questions? Yes, sure. Okay. Aaron, could you come up and just state your name and the city of your residence for the record, please?
Good evening, Council. My name is Aaron Nichols. I live, I live between North Plains and Hillsborough. The address, my address is Hillsborough address. I wanted to talk to you about this just briefly. I realize that a lot of this money is already spent. But the forty-five thousand, the forty thousand for the appeal and five thousand for the H and A defense, I think is something you should reconsider and push off till next year. It is not money, I think, serves the city in, in any, in any way. You know, the previous resolutions will buy nice tables for the city or, or speed radar signs, which are all useful things that, that will, that will give a benefit to the city of North Plains. This appeal, even should it be one, which is very unlikely considering the, the continued losses by Mr. Kreen in court on this, wouldn't affect anything. It would not get a UGB through the city. It wouldn't change the process of doing any expansion in the city. All it would do is maybe say that the city council did back in whatever month that was, have the authority to, to ask for something to be taken off. I have, have to have an approved referendum taken off a ballot, which is unlikely, an unlikely answer in, in this. And I don't, I don't, I don't see how that is worth forty-five thousand dollars. That said, my group, of course, will defend, defend them to win in court, should we have to. But I don't, I don't think it benefits you. I don't really think it benefits us. And so I would say save the forty-five thousand dollars and don't, and don't, don't spend it on this. Spend it smile. Like I said.
Is there any getting on line? And the double check?
I don't see any hands up, Mayor.
Council?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I want to do this. I'd like to make a motion approving resolution number two two nine three, authorizing contingency spending.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion?
No, my only discussion was, in my request, was to ask about what additional contingency that left in the funds and Bill explained that to me. And as far as I'm concerned, it's, you know, there's plenty there for the rest of the biennium. And I don't see how this affects a financial decision. It affects other decisions. So that's why I'm in favor of it. If we were strapped and we didn't have this contingency set aside, which we did intentionally in our budget, because we weren't certain what would happen, then I fully supportive of this resolution.
Any other comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Great, thank you. Item number eleven is unfinished business. And I'm going to turn this to Council Sheldon.
Yes, I have a letter that I basically I'm gonna read tonight, and that's to the city of North Plains City Council and the citizens of North Plains. On or about October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, Aaron Nichols, representing the Friends of Smart Growth, filed a complaint through the Oregon Secretary of State's web portal. The complaint accused myself and Bill Reed, finance manager for the city of North Plains, of violations related to ethics laws and breaches of Oregon ethics rules, I should say, elections law. This complaint was lodged following a letter sent to Nichols and his candidates for city council races from the city of North Plains, which addressed the removal of a campaign video posted on Save North Plains website. An action that itself violated an elections law and presented evidence of criminal trespass on city property by unnamed individuals. Subsequently, an article titled Outright Intimidation appeared in the Hillsborough News Times, amplifying the baseless and unsubstantiated allegations put forth by Aaron Nichols. The article further mischaracterized our actions, claiming that Bill Reed and I were accused of colluding to intimidate, retaliate, and misuse public officials' time with regards to the campaign video in question. I write today to set the record straight. I have recently been informed that the complaint filed by Aaron Nichols with the Oregon Secretary of State has resulted in no investigation. The Secretary of State has declined to pursue any further action citing the complete lack of merit to the allegations. Specifically, they stated Aaron Nichols, quote, "has not presented evidence that would demonstrate the claims in the city's communication is false or politically motivated," end quote. And state, quote, "The contents appear to be carrying out the administrative duties of the city," end quote. In addition, no ethics complaints were ever filed against myself or Bill Reed, as confirmed by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. The allegations of intimidation and violations of ethics law made by Aaron Nichols, along with a subsequent publication of the misleading and defamatory article in the Hillsborough News Times, were clearly a coordinated effort to spread misinformation and to harm the reputations of myself and my colleague. These claims are false. And the actions described in the article are entirely without basis. It is deeply unfortunate that these smear tactics were deployed at such a critical time with the intention of undermining our integrity and distracting from the important work we are doing in North Plains. The defamatory claims made by Aaron Nichols and his associates represent a deliberate effort to distort the truth and mislead the public about actions of the city of North Plains staff and council. Moving forward, I will continue to focus my responsibilities to this community, rising above the distractions and focusing on what matters most. The future growth and well-being of North Plains. I will not allow myself to be derailed by the petty actions of others. Additionally, I request the entire case record and the declination letter from the Oregon Secretary of State to be entered into the personnel file of Bill Reed, city manager, to counter the false claims and defamatory publicity that have been circulated as a result of these baseless allegations. Thank you for your attention to the matter and I remain committed to serving the city of North Plains with integrity and dedication. Russ Sheldon, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheldon? All right. Moving on to twelve A, which is new business, is the appointment to fill the city council vacancy for a term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Councilor Smith is retiring and going to do a lot of traveling and he could be greatly missed. And according to our charter, I am not allowed to, the mayor is not a participant in the voting of the appointment. So I'm gonna turn the gavel over to Council Pressman for this item.
Okay, folks, we're looking at, we're on item
Twelve A.
Twelve A. And on twelve A, we have two announcements. Lisa Frye has withdrawn her application from the appointment process due to personal reasons as well as Travis Robichaud. So those two folks aren't under consideration tonight. So we have consideration of the council application of Don Weber, Tratner Andreas, Shelley, Toroka, and Michael Shirts, and Michelle McCall Wallace. Is there any of those candidates for this appointment wanting to make a brief statement to the council? And if so, please come and approach, take a seat, and we'll give you a couple minutes to expound on why we should consider you.
You got me first. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Michelle McCall Wallace. I've lived here in, in March, it will be seven years living in North Plains. I moved to the area to take a position with the city of Hillsborough as their cultural arts manager, which I retired from this past year. And when I first moved here, we looked around and said, where do we want to live? We, you know, which we, we didn't know the area very well. We knew the city. We visited Portland many times, but not the other areas. And we said, oh, well, let's, let's move close to the job and then let's look around. And in doing so, we kept coming back to North Plains because of its size, it's downtown, it's murals, it's and just the environment. And we visited the garlic festival, we showed up for And we visited the garlic festival. We showed up for a couple of events, and then we moved here. And so now that I am retired, I have a little more free time. Cultural Arts Manager, the pretty demanding, all-hours kind of job. And so I'm looking to become more involved in the community again. I think two months after I moved here, I applied for the Budget Committee, and I was on the Budget Committee with several new, and and then just the job stuff got a little crazy. So kind of backed down to that as we grew in Hillsborough, where I helped put together their cultural arts plan, as well as their, as pushed through downtown, the designation as a downtown cultural arts district, which is one of the first in the state of Oregon. So, so working on those kind of projects there. But I also have a background as a mayor and a city council member in a small city prior to coming here, smaller than North Plains, where the council members wrote ordinances, resolutions, proclamations to help out. We didn't manage the departments. We did have people doing that, and it was a city manager form of government. So I'm very familiar with that form of government. The other was that I helped with, uh, do national searches for city manager. Also bringing in or putting together a cultural, uh, city council protocol manual, sort of all the rules and everything in plain language for council members to understand how, how it works and what the process is. And, and then helped them, helped as a group develop a fifteen-year strategic plan for the City of Blue Lake, went through the city council. So I think I noted in my statement that I think that North Plains is at a great point and a tipping point in terms of becoming a, a little bit bigger livable city, in a sense, not that it's not livable now, but there's changes happening in how to incorporate them and really as a council moving forward to really support this community in its growth. So I welcome any questions.
Council, any questions?
Thank you for applying. This is great. My goodness.
Now, thanks for.
Could be a real asset to the council.
I understand. It's not enough if people wait.
Okay.
Councilor Smith.
Okay. Thanks for stepping up. From what I've read here, really like to resonate. I think you'd be a great candidate. And I think say this, but far superior in a lot of ways of knowledge. I think you'd be a great asset for North Plains.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the council? All right, Michelle, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, Councilmember.
Do we have any online candidates for appointment to city council that would like to speak tonight? Okay, council, at this point, what is the will of the council?
No, I, I said it, I said it before when we were talking about budget committee. But I think it really actually speaks a lot of the words and showing up and being present and, you know, introducing yourself can go so far. So with that, I would like to nominate Michelle McCall Wallace for the appointment.
I want a second.
You would move approval for acceptance? And that is a second, so I hear we have a motion to move for Michelle McCall Wallace and a second by Councilor Smith. Is there any discussion?
What would be, would it be a four-year term?
It'll be the completion of Ricky's term, which expires in twenty-twenty-six.
Exactly.
Yes. Okay, hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none opposed, motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, Council Sheldon, and congratulations, Michelle. All right, moving on to our city manager report. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. So, let's see. I think we included Friday five information, and there's a lot in there. We tried to keep you all updated and what's been going on and where things are going. A few items I think I'll mention. If I forget something, forgive me. But first thing is, I just kind of wanted to bring up the topic of Jesse Mays, if I might, just to kind of communicate about that. You know, this will be something that I'll work with, with, in January, with the incoming folks and the new, the new council as it's assembled, but we're going to want to, just to kind of let you know, there's been a lot of, you know, lack of, you know, kind of maybe bad communication on our part or misunderstanding. But we're going to try to work on kind of formal policy or informal policy to kind of consistently open up and let this building be rented when we can, but what we're, I guess what we struggle with and what's been a problem with rentals has really been the kitchen. And what's in there and keeping it clean and renters cleaning it properly and additional staff time and above and beyond the cost for renting the building. And there's been some misunderstanding, I think, out there about what the hesitance has been about, about it, but, you know, in the, in this current biennial, biennial budget, we began, we began reporting Jesse Mays as an enterprise fund of its own. So we pulled it out of the Parks and Recreation Department because we wanted to get a sense of how well are we taking care of it? How much money are we putting into it? How much is it costing us for staff time and renting it and cleaning it up and checking that people have gotten out successfully and according to the rules? All of that stuff compared to how much we're making renting it. And what became abundantly clear is that unless we, you know, even with flawless rentals, it's tough for this building to come even close to, for the fee to help kind of pay for, you know, the cost that's involved. But what makes it really worse is use of the kitchen in rentals. Because of just the, almost frequently, if not always, just dealing with issues complicated with that and cleaning up and food mess. The other thing is that I know that, I know that the community, members of the community, the Parks Foundation, I believe, are looking into, or maybe the Parks Board even, have been exploring the idea and are interested in some kind of fundraising to, to improve the kitchen, to give it some more modern amenities and maybe even the bathrooms. And if that were possible, if that could be done, and we could put that improvement in place, honestly, we could charge a little bit more for the rentals because we have modern amenities in it, and we would be, we would be, this building would be able to be used for different types of events in a better way with a better kitchen. And just improvements that make it easier to keep it clean and well-maintained. That'd go a long way, actually, in us to being able to more financially sustainably rent the building if people wanted to rent it. So I just want to put that out there that we're going to, we're going to, we're going to try to open it up, be careful about it, but just also be careful about rentals not trying to avoid kitchen aids, because that's where, that's the sticking point on some of this stuff. So I just wanted to put that particular thing out there for you all and kind of get out there and say that. That's what our goal is going to be. Beyond that, it's been a long evening, so I'm sorry. I've looked at a bunch of numbers, and I'm trying to think if there's anything else immediately. Mayor, does anything come to mind? You had a question of me?
Um, the Oregon unemployment.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. That's a, that's a late-breaking development, so my apologies. So I teased in the, in the last Friday five that Kristin Gerhardt, our accountant, in going through all of our payroll deductions and our, the, the, the benefits and taxes that we pay for our employees, we identified that there was a, an amount of money that the Oregon Employment Department had been keeping for us unnecessarily. And it accumulated to about, it accumulated to about sixty-four thousand dollars. And it turns out, and it, and we're still, we're still getting this nailed down. But it, but it turns out that we can get a refund of up to sixty thousand dollars of that.
Why not all of it?
And, and, and the, in the process of going through this, and, and we'll nail this down completely. But the money that we've been paying on this, we stopped a couple of years ago. It's something the city has just generally been paying, part of payroll tax, part of payroll expense for every employee we have. It's not something we've been deducting from people's pay, so it's not anything like we have to reimburse anybody for. It's just something the city has been paying for every employee up until a couple of years ago. And it's been sitting there. So we're going to look into nailing down for sure that it, it kind of is just a general refund for the city with no strings attached. And then I think what we're going to do is come up, and again, we'll work with the next council on this, but we'll work up with some, probably what we'll do is work on some kind of, it's, it's really money that we were paying for to cover unemployment claims, the city's expense, share of the expense on that. We're, we have money already. This is a refund on top of what we're supposed to have already with the state. We were looking at probably carving out an additional reserve just to be on the safe side for unemployment claims, but then figure out what perhaps the additional money might best be done, whether it's fully reserved or something like that eventually. But what I will say related is if, when we nail down that it is not for sure with any strings attached to it getting it back, we do have the opportunity to use some of it as upfront expense to significantly improve the audio, the AV equipment and the meeting technology that we have. It's not perfect. We've had lean resources to truly invest in this building. We had a previous library director put in some good stuff, but that was a long time ago. And we now have the Owl, but it's not perfect either for in-person versus online. And anyway, we'll be working with MAC and Quality Valley Community Television on, they're going out to bid to get a couple of bids for us on what investment would be needed to improve, true improvement to audio/video capability and meeting technology here. And then we might end up using some of the funds I spoke about as upfront to pay for that. But most cities, nearly all cities, when they work with MAC, there's a grant process, and we likely would be able to get a good portion of that reimbursed at a later date. So it's all a process that we'll talk with the next council about. But I wanted to let you know that with those monies, we may have a faster path to really getting meeting space here, working properly for council and our boards and commissions, and then our workshops and everything else that we do here, too. So that was just a preview of that.
Yeah. Um, before I dive into council reports, Cynthia Hurst, just your name and the city of residence, if that is a record.
Thank you. Cynthia Hurst, I live here in North Plains. I'm secretary of the North Plains Parks Foundation. And what Bill was referring to is fundraising for the kitchen. The Parks Foundation, Stuart King and I met with the Parks and Rec Board a couple of months ago, talked to them, and we're ready to launch, after the first of the year, a fundraising campaign for this kitchen. So because of the holidays, we've kind of, we held off. We wanted to wait until after the first of the year because everybody receives all kinds of money requests at this time. So after the first of the year, you will be receiving something asking for funds for the kitchen. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So you need that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Almost timely. Thank you.
And last thing, if TBC TV is going out for bid for this, make sure that Global Electric knows about it because the gentleman, one of the gentlemen they have who designs this is extremely good. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate that.
You got two dollars.
One other thing I did want to make sure that we get on the record. So we did have a request to use Jesse Mays. The Kenny Fields, as many, many of you know, passed away, and he was iconic in this community and has a lot of family and friends in the community. And his family came forth and asked if we would consider allowing the rental of Jesse Mays. But they've asked if we could possibly waive the fee because they want to have a celebration of life this Saturday. And, you know, I really want to just go on the record and be able to say, like, we have the consensus of the council in order to be able to, you know, allow this. So we, we've given them the, the okay to use the space, but I just want to kind of go on the record and make sure that we have consensus for, for allowing this for the family. Okay. All right.
Feeling good.
I think we're good. Lori?
Yes.
We got that covered? Any council reports? Any?
I have a council report. I attended my final Metropolitan Area Communications Commission meeting on Friday. It was comprised of about an hour and fifteen-minute executive session, legal counsel regarding matters I can't disclose. But the rest of the meeting was essentially approving grants, grants that Bill's mentioned. There's grant money available. We need to get in front of them. My suggestion would be that you get in touch with Thaddeus, make him, you know, not if you, maybe you've done that already, but I can still advocate for a few days. So I've spent the last eight years on the commission, and it's a good group. There's, there are a lot of new folks on there this year, some returning folks. But yeah, in essence, we approved all of the grants that were before us. Their request well exceeded what they had a budget for, but they'll have a budget in the next round coming up. Other than that, it was pretty just informative about where the FCC is at in terms of right-of-way. And right-of-way is more of an issue than some people think about what's in the right-of-way. And so there's, there's some interesting twist in that. I won't get into that detail, but it was, it was a pretty good informative meeting. That's, that's pretty much it on that front.
Okay. Council Martinez, how many years have you been? Two terms? Councilor Smith?
Six, I'm not six terms.
Well, six years.
Feels like six terms.
That makes something. Sixty years for me, geez. What year? But so we've got forty-four here, sixteen here, and eight here. So if my math is correct, we're looking at eighty-two years of community service between the five of us. And I just want to make, make that point known that, you know, I have, I have been super proud and honored to be the mayor of this fine community for the last eight years, and then eight, eight on city council prior to that. And giving my time in my life and my, my day job, too, just to represent this community to the best of my ability and to have the support of so many people, not just in this room and, and maybe some folks online. But there's a lot of folks in this community that I do know that support me and have supported many of all of us up here on this council as we look forward to try to do the right thing by planning for our future. We know that, you know, growth has come in if we like it or not. And we have done everything, I think, in our power to do everything that we can to try to bring information and, and knowledge and folks in the region and in the state to our community to help us figure this out. And I just want to say how, how proud I am to call you my friends, to call you my counselors. Staff has been amazing. Chris Creed, I don't know, we've known each other for a long time. Thank you so much for being there for, for the city. Lori, I remember when you started and you were like, oh, my God, what have I been doing? And you've come a long way as well. And, and I'm just, I'm so proud of, you know, our staff and the volunteers. and, and the volunteers, the other volunteers in this community who have given so much of their time. Because this is a team sport, you know, I mean, I know I'm the, the mayor and I'm the figurehead and the talking person out there, but I, I couldn't do my job without everybody here and everybody behind the scenes. And I just want to just say what an honor it has been and I really appreciate all of you and I hope we all stay in touch.
I'm not going. Yeah.
So, anything else? Cameron? No? Councilor Smith?
I want vacation.
All right, well, this, well, I'm, I'm impressed. I kind of figured we might be here till ten, but um, you know, uh, eight forty-two is not too bad. So with that, I will say uh, adjourn my last city council meeting for twenty twenty-four.